The fire marshal, just little cleanup type things, updating a definition of occupancy, replacing or with and, you know, those sorts of things, all just very minor language corrections. The next section that I know you all have seen a lot of correspondence on, and there's been a lot of discussion since the first public hearing, is the Historic Preservation Code. As the county attorney's office shared yesterday morning and by email, code has been updated to reflect the language of the Georgia Department of Community Affairs' model ordinance for historic preservation. So while the changes that have been made are not material changes, they are really just language that's been changed to be more consistent with the state model ordinance. And then the one other thing that we changed there, section 66-59, is as you'll recall, we did send the draft ordinance to the Department of Community Affairs for review so they could, again, see that it's consistent with state law. And one recommendation that they gave us was where we had proposed to make the public hearing notification requirements the same as zoning, just for consistency, they recommended changing that to, you know, leaving it as it currently stands with no more than 20 days, no less than 10 days. The section 78-122, and as you'll recall, this is the ordinance that pertains to the Major League Baseball All-Star Game. At the last presentation, as we shared with you, we were adding just one comment in there that the community development department would be the one responsible for reviewing the signage package when that comes forward, just as clarification. And we mentioned that at the last public hearing, but at this point, it's actually been written into that code. Section 106-3 and 106-186, both of these are DOT provisions. The first one is to, is regarding buried utilities and also just clarifying some requirements for resurfacing. And then the second one, 106-186, is really specific to the repair and replacement of non-county-owned utility poles and the processes that need to be followed when those are replaced. With that, we'll get into the zoning ordinance. And some of these, we talked about at the last meeting. Some of them were items that the Planning Commission had held, and they had their meeting last week, so we've updated some of these to reflect their recommendations. 134-290, this is pertaining to the off-street road design guidelines. Again, this one, we were bringing the design guidelines into the code rather than just being guidelines. At this point, the way that that's been addressed for the Planning Commission recommendation is the code itself includes the applicability for the design guidelines. It references the design guidelines and says that, you know, if you are in that area, that off-street road corridor overlay area, you are required to follow the guidelines. It also provides in there the process by which the guidelines would be updated. So what the Planning Commission has recommended is to move forward with this ordinance, and then they've asked staff to come back, and I committed to them probably in April, with the guidelines, with some updates to the guidelines, and those will be reviewed by the Planning Commission as well as the Board of Commissioners before they're adopted. 134-312, again, we talked about this at the last meeting, the changes to banner. The other piece, the major road, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the Planning Commission recommended to add I-575 to the definition of the major road. I think that whenever they made that recommendation, perhaps they didn't have the full context of where a major road was used. And I shared with you last time that it really is very specific to billboards and where billboards are located. They can only be located on major roads, and perhaps the reason 575 was excluded was that was not a corridor where billboards were desired. So the staff recommendation, right now, the code reflects the Planning Commission recommendation. The staff recommendation is to leave that definition as if excluding 575. 134-314, again, just some language that was cleaned up, and I mentioned these at the last meeting per the Planning Commission recommendation. This is specific to blade signs, just clarifying that wall signs can't project more than 24 inches from the wall, but blade sides are a little bit different than a typical wall sign, so they would be able to project 48 inches from the wall. 134-321, this is another one where we had a lot of conversation with the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission recommendation differs from the staff recommendation. So what you see in the code reflects the Planning Commission's recommendation. And as it reads, it would allow for in commercial and industrial zone properties for wall signs to be one square foot per one linear foot of the building. So if you have a 30-foot-long frontage on your building, your tenant space, or what have you, you could have a 30-square-foot sign. So that's the Planning Commission's recommendation, that it would not exceed 100 square feet for one- and two-story buildings. So potentially, if you had 150-foot-long building, you could still only have 100-square-foot sign if it's a one- or two-story building. And that would be for one- and two-story buildings and buildings under 30 feet, and no more than 150 square feet for buildings exceeding two stories or 30 feet. The other piece that they've added in there, and this is reflected in the current draft of the code that you have, says that if a building is setback no more than 200 feet from the right-of-way, that would be the standard, 150 and 100. But if they are more than 200 feet from the right-of-way, one- and two-story buildings would be able to have up to 150 square feet. So it is increased because it's further from the road, and up to 200 square feet for buildings exceeding two stories. I saw Commissioner Burrow's email yesterday. Commissioner Burrow's email actually reflects what's currently, or what was in the first draft of the code, and that is still staff recommendation. The staff recommendation is still one or two square feet per one linear foot, up to 150 square feet for one- and two-story buildings or buildings under 20 feet.
May you clarify that, or just say that again slower, I'm gonna...
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
So the staff recommendation, and this was also reflected in Commissioner Burrow's email, is two square feet per one linear foot. And for buildings that are one- and two-story buildings, or buildings that are under 20 feet in height, that would be a maximum of 150 square feet. For buildings exceeding two stories or 20 feet, that would be a maximum of 200 square feet. Staff also recommends against the provision for additional signage if a building is setback further from the right-of-way. Our concern there is, you know, for one thing, it just, you're adding an additional layer. The standards that we have in our code right now and the process, the formula is very consistent with what you see just throughout the region. It typically is certain square footage based on the linear footage of your building frontage. And so that's, you know, we want to be pretty consistent with that. And also, I think that if we get into nitpicking about how far back you are from the right-of-way, then we're going to eventually have to require surveys for a sign permit for a wall sign. And I just don't think that's an additional layer of work or requirements that we want to put on our businesses and our applicants. So the staff recommendation, again, is to keep what we put forth with the first revision. And I'll just add to that a little bit further, and I don't want to get too deep into the weeds on this, but, you know, our zoning staff has looked, you know, the intent of this was essentially to reduce the number of variances that are coming to BZA, because they come to BZA, BZA approves them, and it's ultimately just holding the process up and keeping our businesses from getting the signage they need and getting their doors open. So that was the intent of increasing the signage allowance. And I will say, as you'll recall, the code, the sign code was rewritten in 2019. The intent of the rewrite was not to address excessive signage on wall signs, so that was not the driving force there. What we're going back to, or what staff recommends going back to at this point, is essentially what would have been allowed under the code pre-2019, the two-square-feet per one linear foot. The difference here is that we have put those caps on it before those caps weren't there. So the 150 and 200. So it's not just an endless allowance of signage, but it would still be something that's reasonable, but also provide the additional signage that our businesses need to be able to be seen. The next piece is 134-322, and this one was another one that we had a good bit of conversation with the Planning Commission on. And essentially, what we've done here is we've changed the section heading to "non-residential uses on residential properties," and then included in that "and apartment and residential subdivision signs." And then further down in that language, it speaks to electronic signs, and there was a question about this yesterday during the agenda work session. The electronic signs that you typically see in residential areas are going to be on your churches and schools, but we did incorporate in here, based on the Planning Commission recommendation, that apartment and residential subdivision signs would be excluded from being able to have those electronic signs. Typically, they don't ask for them, but we've got it in here as a safeguard, so that ultimately, it really is those truly non-residential uses in residential districts that would be able to have the electronic signs. And just one other thing before I wrap up here, just one clarification. And this isn't a change from the first draft, but whenever I spoke to the accessory buildings and the Conservation Subdivision District, and Commissioner Garmbrill pointed this out, I misspoke on that. So what we're proposing here, of course, the Conservation Subdivision District no longer exists. So we're proposing that for accessory buildings in those districts, that those are reviewed under the same process that they are for any other residential zoning district in Cobb, which would essentially be, if they exceed 650 square feet, they would have to be submitted for plan review through the community development department. As long as they meet the 100-foot setback requirement, they wouldn't come to BZA. But if they are closer than 100 feet from the right-of-way, they would have to come to BZA for approval. So that's my spiel. If there are any questions, I'm glad to answer those. If there's anything you'd like further detail on, we'd be glad to provide that. And otherwise, we would just ask Madam Chair that you would open the public hearing.
Thank you. Commissioners, would you like to weigh in on this now, or take into consideration comments during the public hearing, and then you can ask questions? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead, and we'll open up the public hearing now, and then let you know any of our comments or questions.
Thank you.
With that, we are going to open up our public hearing for the code amendments. If you are here to address code amendments specifically, please feel free to approach... And similar to our other public hearing, you have a maximum of three minutes. Good morning.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Yes, you'll have a maximum of three minutes.
Three minutes?
Three minutes.
Oh.
If you can help us and share with us your name.
Good morning, I'm Pat Burns. I live in the Concord Covered Bridge Historic District. The historic preservation code changes are not written to clarify, but written to accommodate one man and his desire to build an incompatible structure in the Covered Bridge Historic District, a structure no other historic district would allow, be it Marietta, Threadmill Complex, New Orleans, Savannah, or elsewhere. Today, you will also be looking at annexations. If one person is opposed to the annexation, would the entire decision to annex or not to annex be based solely on one individual? I think not. That would be absurd. It's been said there will be winners and losers over preservation code changes. Winners and losers are made when negotiations and compromises are shut down. I trust this is not the situation. The historic district itself was conceived through negotiation and compromise with the community, the Board of Commissioners, and CDOT. Negotiation and compromise also gave birth to Heritage Park, the Silver Comet Trail, the East-West Connector, bonuses to the good life of Cobb County and beyond. At the recent retreat, Chairwoman Cupid said, "Listen to your community. We are your community. Community development is not your community." I'm asking this Board of Commissioners to honor the commitment of 2020 and quickly set up a citizens committee to negotiate and compromise with community development using building guidelines. This would place the Covered Bridge Historic District on an equal level with other historic districts in Cobb County, and then this man could build his house. Integrity is part of compromise. Transparency is part of negotiations. The words integrity and transparency are the forefront of this commission. In conclusion, we are the community asking you not to pass preservation code changes, but instead to meet, to compromise, and to negotiate. And let me end with this video.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here for the public hearing? Good morning.
Thank you, Chairwoman Cupid. Appreciate you. Dana Johnson with the Cub Chamber of Commerce. And I just want to thank all the commissioners for the great work that you've done on this round of code amendments. It's a lot of very good, business-friendly policies that you're bringing forward, and I just want to thank you for that. Also, the, as it relates to the code changes with the signs, I think community development brought together a good proposal, because when you add certain regulations that will result in an increased cost for small businesses to, in order to show compliance with a particular code, it just increases the cost for them to be able to open and operate. And we would recommend finding ways where we could keep it more, what's the word I'm looking for, easier for people to open and not have to have as much cost as it relates to trying to open and operate. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for this public hearing? Okay, C. Nunn will declare this public hearing closed. Commissioners, if you have any questions or comments regarding the code amendments, this would be a good time to share it. And I see you, Commissioner Burrow. So I will start with one, and then we'll go through districts two, three, and four.
Thank you. Jessica, back going to the sign ordinance, I'm going to take slight issue with one of your comments. When you said you weren't worried about the signage in the setback, I know we've got several issues with temporary signage going in that is technically in the setback, you know, where it is legally, but it is obstructing view. So is there a way that, while we're not going to be addressing this directly in the code, that that is taken into consideration when we go to approve a permanent sign, and how that could impact visual traffic on a road that might be within the setback? That kind of concerned me when you said that.
Well, and whatever, if it is a permanent sign, and it's a ground sign, at those points, they would be required to submit a survey. They're required to submit all that information. What we were talking about was specific to wall signs only.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification. And then also, to address some of the comments that Ms. Burns raised, because I know we had a conversation based on some emails that I had. My understanding from you is that the property that she referenced would not be impacted by this code change, correct?
The, are we speaking to the property in the Covered Bridge area, or the one in District One?
In the Covered Bridge area.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. So the property that, where the gentleman is seeking to build his house, and that would continue to be included in the Covered Bridge Historic District. As, you know, well, as Commissioner Cupid, Chairwoman Cupid, who was on the board at the time, will recall, and I'm Commissioner Garmbrill, I'm not sure if you were on the board at the time or not, that property, the certificate of appropriateness, was approved under the code that stands today. At that point, it was appealed. It went through that process, and Judge Grub submitted an order at that point that had some recommendations and pointed out some ambiguities in our code. At this point, the code amendment is moving forward to clear up some of those ambiguities. Again, the certificate of appropriateness was approved under the code. At the point, if he brought it back forward, as we talked about this morning, it's just like zoning. You have the code, but you also have five human beings up here who are making decisions based on the information at hand. That Historic Preservation Commission, based on the current code, approved the certificate of appropriateness. That commission's not the same today, so if it came back forward, I mean, essentially, it's the will of the board whether or not that would be approved regardless of what the code is. I hope that's answered.
Yeah, I wanted that clarified. Thank you. That's all my comments I have for right now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
I don't really have too many comments. It was just more of a, to piggyback off of the comments made with regards to historic preservation, the code changes there, and just to address the concern brought up about how it's a, and one individual, are we changing this for one individual? And so, just curious on the motivation. What are we trying to accomplish with this change? Because it is, my understanding that it was to be consistent with something proposed from state perspective. But what was the incentive or the driver for this particular time at this point for...
Right. And that's a great question. Again, whenever the, when the certificate appropriateness that was issued was appealed, at that point, of course, it went through the court process. We received an order after, you know, that process was up, that identified some issues in the code that we should revisit or, you know, consider revisiting. There was nothing in there that said that the decision to approve the certificate of appropriateness was inappropriate, or that they shouldn't have made that call. Ultimately, it did say that, you know, the, what was approved, they made a recommendation of approval, but attached stipulations to it. Well, our code, as it stands right now, says you can approve it or you can deny it. It doesn't give the Historic Preservation Commission grounds to attach stipulations, just like you would with zoning, and to say, okay, well, you can do this, but here are the things you're going to need to do in order to make it less impactful to the neighborhood or whatever. So at that point, the county attorney's office, prior to last round of code amendments, began working on a code amendment. And all this started long before I came on board. So we brought forth the amendment package last year. It has been changed some this year, and again, to reflect the state model ordinance. But ultimately, that's what we are working to do here, is to ensure that our code is consistent with the state model ordinance for historic preservation.
Thanks, thanks for that clarification. So that leads to a follow-up here. So basically, to summarize, we're saying, the court said, "If you don't want this to be an issue, please update your code in order to make sure that this doesn't go all the way through the court system again." And so the follow-up question I have to that is, did that board, that Historic Preservation Board at that point in time, offer any recommendations for ordinance changes? Not stipulations, but recommendations on ordinance change in order to accommodate a happy medium between historic preservation and new development?
And I'll call on the county attorney's office if I, Debbie, help me out if I get off-base.
Thank you.
But the Historic Preservation Board is not there, is not a recommending body to make recommendations on code. You all, as the Board of Commissioners, are the ones who are tasked with that. And so the county attorney's office, along with community development, you know, prepared the code amendment, and it comes only to the Board of Commissioners for consideration.
And I will add, it doesn't preclude them from participating, or any member of the public.
Absolutely.
They don't make a formal recommendation similar to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, both of you, for that clarification as well. Just curious if anyone had kind of pulled you aside and said, "You know, this would have more teeth if," but...
Well, and we did, you know, to just flesh that out a little bit further, you know, whenever we pulled together the stakeholder group, which included representatives of the Covered Bridge District, as well as some representatives of Clarkdale Mill Village, because they also are impacted by the code amendment and by the historic preservation code, we did have some recommendation, representation from that board. So they are aware of the changes that are being put forth.
Attorney Blair's behind you.
I didn't hear that last question. I was chatting. But I can, if you want to restate the question, I'm not sure what that last question was. I apologize.
Oh, you're fine. It was basically getting to the idea, had there been, when that case came up, when that particular request came up, were there any comments made by that, at that time, that board, based upon, because they obviously identified that there was some type of conflict, because there was an approval, and then they wanted to give stipulations but were not allowed to, or it's not a part of their jurisdiction? Did any of the members make any comments towards code changes that would allow for more of a happy medium between the goals of historic preservation and new development?
Right. And the HPC did not make any recommendations as to changes at that point in time. The, as Jessica stated, the certificate of appropriateness was approved three times by our HPC, twice by our board, I think, or once by our Board of Commissioners. And the neighbors appealed that to our Superior Court. When it was reviewed by the Superior Court, the court, as Jessica stated, informed us that the condition, no more than 4,000 square feet, was not approving it or denying it, but modifying the application. So at that point in time, we realized that it truly does, our code currently states that we may approve or deny only. There's no other option. So as you all do in zoning, there's maybe one thing that you can do that would allow an application to go through and proceed with a condition. So we thought that that was a very reasonable thing to add. The other question that came up, that was of, a lot of discussion around, was the immediate neighborhood verbiage. That verbiage is used in state law, and it was incorporated into our county code. But we don't have to be exact to state law. We have to be consistent with state law. So our historic preservation code currently, as we've stated, has been revised to conform to the model code, which, of course, is consistent with state law, but not exactly using the same words. We still look at design, scale, architecture, all of those kinds of things. But this was a way to basically be a happy medium to, it's not the exact words of state law, but it is a model code that was developed by Department of Community Affairs and has been adopted through multiple jurisdictions throughout Georgia.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Addresses my questions, both of you. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Garmbrill.
So you said it's been adopted by many jurisdictions.
Yes.
Have they included the immediate neighborhood in their adoption, or have they...
No, they've adopted the model code as it's written.
Does the model code have immediate neighborhood in there or not?
It does not.
It does not. Thank you.
While we're on this particular matter...
Yeah, I was going to ask if I can jump in ahead of Commissioner Burrow.
Commissioner, hold on one more. Commissioner Burrow, did you have any questions regarding this code?
Just a clarification on what we're discussing right now.
Okay. All right. Let me let, let me let Commissioner, let me let Commissioner Sheffield go ahead. I'm sorry, since you started, then I'll go and make sure I come to you, Commissioner Burrow.
No, yeah, that's fine. I'd rather hear...
Okay.
No, I just wanted to add that there is a concern that the amendments are being revised to fit a particular applicant. And we've had discussions and also conference call with the friends of this Covered Bridge, and you guys indicated that it was not. But there was reference also made about other historic districts, including the Threadmill and other places. But my understanding is that there are design guidelines for those historic areas, which in this particular instance, it is not. Can you just elaborate or give us some more information or clarification on that?
Sure. We have two historic districts in Cobb, one Clarkdale and then the historic Covered Bridge. Both of them are in District Four. The, there are specific design guidelines for Clarkdale in that. That is a very small area. The homes are close together, and it entirely makes sense to have design guidelines. If you change one thing to one of the homes, then it's impacting the entire, the entire district. When this district, excuse me, the Covered Bridge District was created, I believe it was '86, it's a much more diverse group. Even when it was, when it was first, you know, they first decided to have it, there are a lot of what is called intrusions in it, homes that are not historic homes. So to put design guidelines on something like that, it just doesn't make sense because there's just, it's a very diverse district. Does that answer your question?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
No, and also based on the video that was shared and public comments, it appears that there are different style of homes. So it doesn't appear to have like a characteristic of what historic homes would look like. So I was just curious, with the applicant, how different does that structure compare to the existing homes in that area?
I can't speak for the HPC, of course, but the HPC thought that it was, you know, that the materials, that the scale, that the design was sufficient to approve the certificate of appropriateness. You know, those are things that they, that they look at. I mean, as you stated, the architecture is different because the homes, the historic homes were built at different times. So I can't speak specifically to that, just simply because I don't want, I don't know exactly what the HPC was thinking when they looked at that. But of course, they were looking at, you know, based on our current code, design, scale, site features... scale, site features, and, and those types of things.
And Commissioner Sheffield, I can share too, even at looking at some of the historic properties in that area, some of them look quite distinct in character from each other. So, to say this one looks distinct in character from the other one shown in the video, there are others too, that would be considered historic in nature, that also look distinct.
Okay. Thanks, Debbie, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Yeah. Are there any other, oh, Commissioner Burrell, please go ahead.
Okay. And thanks for clarifying that, Ms. Blair and Commissioners. My comments are, I would like to just go over the recommendations that I suggested yesterday in an email to y'all. I agree with staff on 134-312, by removing I-575. There are no billboards on Cobb's part of 575 now, and I think it seems to, I'd like to see it stay that way, and just include the ones that are already mentioned. So, thank you for that. Section 134-321, the wall sign, code, I would, I'd prefer or recommend the original staff recommendation. We do have a lot of these going to BZA, which we don't hear, but we do have a lot of variances, and I think that would help, this would help alleviate that, because, I mean, if, if you have a code in place, and you got a BZA for a variance, and it's granted, and you have that many, it's time to revise the code, maybe. And then, on the redevelopment overlay district, section 134-221 dot two, this was brought forward by me, and my second is Commissioner Gamble. And I feel that, first of all, the ROD code was created back in 2006. It has never been used until last year, one case, that's still pending. So, any changes to it, or removing it altogether now, the current code would still apply to the pending case. I think when, when it was done, and none of us were here then, in 2006, we, there were some discrepancies and confusion with the code, and the Cobb plan, and what was actually adopted. And there was a committee of neighbors and citizens that reviewed this with staff before it was adopted 15 years ago. So, I, I feel like it, it's not needed. There are other zoning categories that can be applied for. The, the current case is on the redevelopment list, so I don't think it's gonna impact future development of rundown shopping centers, or vacant buildings, and, and that kind of thing, because we have a process to identify those as redevelopment sites, which are eligible for certain tax credits, or incentives. So, they have, an ROD has to be on the redevelopment list by the code as it is now. So, the other thing that, if we don't remove it, and it stays on the books, even though we have no new applications, would be accepted March 1st, which needs to be changed to effective immediately today, if we go with that. But, a developer could come in and apply for a rezoning in another classification, PVC, or other commercial zoning categories. This board could delete that zoning, even though the proposal, or the application, is for another zoning category. If this code stays in the, in the books, that the board can delete a zoning to this classification. So, it's, the, the, no, accepting new applications, you know, nobody can bring forward any new applications, but it doesn't take away the code to, that the Board of Commissioners could delete a rezoning in another category to an ROD. So, my recommendation is to remove it. If two Commissioners want to form a Citizens' Committee, or Neighborhood Committee, to look at this, and bring it back next year with a revised code, or new code, that would be my suggestion, if that's the wishes of two Board members, to bring it forward. But my recommendation today is to remove it from the code, and, and that, that was my recommendation. And then, if, if the board's will is to leave it and go with the, no application, no new applications accepted after March 1st, that needs to be changed to today, date, or effective immediately. Because March 1st is a couple weeks away, and there, there could be something filed between then, then and now. So, that's all I have. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. May you weigh in on that, Director, before?
Absolutely, I'd be glad to. And to Commissioner Burrell's point about changing the date to, to today, that no new applications would be accepted, I think that's certainly, you know, if that's the will of the board, we're glad to do that. With regard to the deleting it, the redevelopment overlay district is a little bit different from your typical zoning categories, PVC, GCR20, in that it's not an actual zoning district, it's an overlay. So your underlying zoning is still there. So you can't really delete something to an overlay district. Now, could you delete it to, you know, neighborhooding, or what have you? You know, there are those other options. But, it's an overlay that goes on top of the underlying zoning. So the underlying zoning doesn't change. And the staff, the reason that we recommended leaving it in here, and frankly, if we hadn't had this application pending, it wouldn't have been a big deal. But since we do have this application that's still pending, just saying, we're not gonna take any new applications. And of course, since it is an overlay, it's not something you could delete to, as the Board of Commissioners. But saying that we're not gonna have any new applications, you're not gonna get additional RODs coming forward, but it's this one that's currently in the process, is working its way through the process. And if it gets approved down the road, as it's being developed that way, it's still in MUNICode, staff can go back and reference it. But also, the public who has concerns, or is curious about the code under which that property is being developed, would be able to still view it in MUNICode, although we're not using it anymore, other than for the pending application.
Are there any questions regarding this, from the Commissioners?
I'll just take one. Commissioner Burrell brought up the idea of coming together with the neighborhood, and revisiting altogether, just that language, and what we want to do as a, as a board, as a, as a, as a commission, as a community, towards the end of the year, revisit, or a new proposal, per se, at the, at next year, or at the end of this year. That was something I know we expressed in the last meeting as well, and just wanted to know what, what that entail from a, you know, from you, and from the board, in terms of moving forward with regards to these items.
There's a few pieces to that. First of all, as, as you all know, the five-year update to the comprehensive plan is coming due, so we're starting work on that. And of course, there'll be a public process through all of that. And I think that's a good opportunity to look at this area, and some other areas in the county, that may be good redevelopment opportunities. Code is not always the answer to our problems. Writing a new code isn't always the answer. And I think we've seen through 15 years of implementation, this code is not addressing the issue that was, it was intended to address. I think as we move forward with the comprehensive plan, also as we move forward with taking a look at our codes, we can make sure there are tools in place, whether there are code tools, or whether there are some other tools in our economic redevelopment toolbox, that can help achieve the goals. You know, the goals are still relevant. And certainly, you know, any of those processes is gonna, you know, it's a countywide initiative, it's going to have plenty of opportunity for the public to participate. And, you know, the ROD code, even as it stands right now, I mean, it is applicable countywide. It's not just specific to this one location where we have the application pending. So, I think it is, you know, absolutely important that we take a look at this with the public, and identify those redevelopment opportunities, and talk some more about what's the best way to achieve our goals there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Commissioner Richardson, we started talking about preservation, and then we start talking about another code section. I'm not sure if you finished addressing any other concerns or issues.
I saved that one for last, so we're good.
Good, okay, very good. Thank you. And Commissioner Sheffield, did you have any other code sections you wanted to address?
Yeah, I did, actually, regarding the noise ordinance and the landscaping equipment. Currently, the code reads that it shall not be used between the hours of 9:00 PM and 7:00 AM on any day of the week. And I'd like to amend that to extend to 8:00 AM on Saturday, and even possibly 9:00 AM on Sunday. We don't address any holiday time, but I just think to start your lawn equipment at 7:00 o'clock on a Saturday or Sunday, I, I'd just like to see that hour start at a later time.
Brian, Brian Johnson with the County Attorney's Office worked on that section of the code, so I'll let him speak to that one, if that's okay.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. So, that time can certainly be amended per, per this board's request. One thing to note is that, if you look at paragraph eight, a few paragraphs above that for construction hours, it mirrors those hours as well. And that would lend to easier enforcement by the Police Department. And so, if this board desires to, to change lawn equipment time to later on Saturdays and Sundays, they certainly can do so. But just to be mindful that, within the same section, there are hours that also say between 9:00 and 7:00 o'clock for construction.
Commissioner, please turn your mic.
Also, in paragraph eight, it has Monday through Saturday, where paragraph, paragraph 12 has any day of the week.
I think the intent there is that the construction activity is commercial activity, and paragraph 12, be mindful, would be applying to homeowners out just doing their lawn maintenance as well. And to be mindful, that would, would the board want to preclude a homeowner from being able to do their yard work on Sunday, especially if that's their only day off?
Yeah, and I, I mean, that's fine, but I think at 7:00 AM is just a bit early to fire up lawn equipment, even if it is your day off.
Those times can certainly be modified. I mean, the, the start times on a morning, whether it's weekday, and/or the weekends, can certainly be modified per this board's discretion.
Oh, do you guys want to weigh in?
I guess my only concern is, is would we need to hold this for another two weeks to allow the public to weigh in? Because this has not been discussed, it was not discussed at the work session, prior to allow constituents to weigh in.
I don't, can the County Attorney address that, please?
I have to look at the dates, but I think we're, in order for the advertisement, I think we're gonna have to approve it today. It's not another, you can't hold it another two weeks before we have them weigh in. So, but I'll look at the dates of that.
It's, and, Bill, it's, it's not my understanding that if the Commissioners propose changes during the code amendment process, that that has to be readadvertised, because that's part of the code amendment process.
Correct. It does not have to be readadvertised. As I understood, Commissioner Gamble's question was, this is a significant change regarding the enforcement of it. And I think she was inviting additional public speakers at the next meeting. Maybe I misunderstood that.
And perhaps I'm misunderstanding, Commissioner Gamble.
My concern, my concern is, we have to be able to approve it within the, within so many days of the last publication.
I see.
That's, that was my concern.
Okay. So you're asking, Commissioner Gamble, can you clarify, yes, your question?
Again, code amendments are put out for people to review and comment on. This is a significant change. And while, yes, I, I agree with you that, you know, hearing my neighbor's lawnmower at 7:00 AM on a Sunday might not be what I want to hear, but we also have to be mindful that that neighbor might have to start at 7:00 AM because of what they need to do. And for us to go through and make a sweeping change like this, without pretty much giving the whole community the opportunity to weigh in, in addition to our public safety officers, because they're the ones that are gonna be getting the calls to address the noise ordinance, I just think this is a little, kind of, coming out of left field. Because again, no comments were made during public comment last week, that even the board was considering this. And even at the work session, you know...
Yes, I'm sorry.
Not entirely true.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
We did, it did come up yesterday at the work session, and also with the original, with our first code amendment meeting, it was addressed.
But I don't remember specific times being, it was brought up that we want to consider it, but I don't remember times being attached to it.
I can't, I know this did come up in conversation. And again, this happened on another hearing where I attended, where we have a code amendment, if it brings forward a code section, that whole code section is available, is open for modification, once it's advertised. And I'm, again, which is why I asked the County Attorney, you know, what's our requirement? And perhaps it may not be a legal requirement, maybe what I'm hearing from you has a level of courtesy to the public, to give them the opportunity to weigh in on a modification. But, we did have a hearing where this was discussed openly, and so, you know, I can see arguments on both sides. And would you want to give the public an opportunity to weigh in on a specific time? But I also know, this was brought up during our first hearing, and also, again, when it's, when a code section is advertised, that whole code section is open for possible amendment.
And while I understand that, but I also brought in, including the Dallas Highway Guidelines, Design Guidelines, and also the Macklin Road Design Guidelines, and we were told we couldn't do that, because it hadn't been advertised. So, I guess, again, I understand what we're trying to do. It would, the code was written that, you know, it would be restricted to, you know, 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. To make this change, because again, I wasn't, I wasn't aware, you know, I knew you had said you were wanting to change the times, but I didn't know a specific time. So if I didn't know a specific time, that means our constituents know, didn't know what a specific time was either. And to that, I think that's unfair.
And, and I'd like to make just an extra comment on this as well. I do understand that we wanted to look at the times and make those considerations. So what I would say is, if we are coming with a specific time change, I would like to hear comment from the public as well. And just to add on to that, you know, to open up a little bit of dialogue here, has someone approached you with, with that recommendation for the noise ordinance?
Actually, yeah, I received emails, and I believe there was a gentleman that spoke during public comments last time regarding the hours of the landscaping. Yeah.
I agree. I received emails, and there was a speaker as well. And I don't know if the gentleman addressed all of us with the emails of the time changes, but I did receive correspondence.
Right, but he had also had others...
Go into the area of...
Commissioners, Commissioners, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Hold on, if I can acknowledge you before you speak, because I need to make sure we flow well together. Okay, so Commissioner Gamble, please.
Okay, thank you. But, in reference to that one email that we got, because I know I did forward it on to Jessica for consideration of inclusion, a lot of what he suggested wasn't included in here either.
Okay.
So I think we need to be careful with that argument, because again, some constituents make really good points, but we never include their points into our codes either. Just like going back to Historic Preservation, you know, they want immediate neighborhood added in. We haven't voted on that, but again, that's a consideration the board needs to take.
Certainly.
No, you know, it, and we all received, I think the email that you referenced a short while ago, we all received it, but I have received multiple emails regarding this. But, as it was brought up earlier, there is concern with law enforcement enforcing the hours on here. So I am willing to remain consistent with what we have, because it just seems like it would, it would be better for public safety, and it's in line with... like it would, it would be better for public safety, and it's in line with what the county already has on the books in terms of, in terms of the hours. So that, that's something that I'll be willing to concede to.
Commissioner Richards, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you. Like I said, it's more of, thank you. If there is something that we do want to make sure we revisit from a time standpoint, though, I'm willing to, you know, bring that into consideration still. Because I know that the needs of, you know, when you're talking about your neighbors, there may be something that we're missing. So just, you know, don't give up immediately, but just wanted to know.
Actually, I'm not giving up at all.
Okay, yes. So just keep me, you know, keep us informed as well if there's something else that we should consider on that topic.
Thank you, Commissioners. And there may be some agreement about keeping things the same, but I think moving forward, there just should be some clarification to our County Attorney. So Commissioners are aware of process. When Commissioners do provide changes to the code, how do we put that before everyone to be considered? I know there were some modifications that were brought back to the Planning Commission. They have a formal way of providing feedback and making recommendations. But for Commissioners, I don't want their authority to be any less, to be able to make changes. Because they, to me, it's, I feel as if any Commissioner should have the ability in a hearing setting where amendment process is underway, to make amendments to code.
Of course, Chairman. They can make those suggestions. You know, the balances with staff, then if one Commissioner makes a suggestion, but it's not a consensus of the board, do we change, do we change it or not? So that, that's the balance of, just one Commissioner saying, I like this, then we don't know whether or not we need to change it, because that might not be the one, the one, the direction the board wants to take. As to the question that was raised, today is the day that we'd have to approve it, whatever the change would be, within the 60 days of the last advertisement. We don't have any more time for that. As to the significance of the change, this chapter was advertised. It was mentioned at the last meeting, that the change on the time is not that significant, that it couldn't be accepted as a change. But to Commissioner Gamble's point, and I think also to Commissioner Richardson's point, is it, does it change, though, the overlying theme of what people can do in their yard so much that it may be, want to be considered at a later time? Or to Commissioner Richardson's point, maybe not as much time as you originally were thinking to move it to. So it's allowed, and it, but it has to be done today, whatever those times would be. And Commissioner Gamble, you mentioned the other, the overlay districts. We specifically looked at that. We had, I had Brian Johnson research that. And Brian, if you would comment on how we cannot move forward with that, because it is different.
The overlay district, Ostell Road Guidelines specifically said Ostell Road Guidelines, and so that's why we couldn't open it up to other guidelines for other areas. For this noise ordinance, it has the, it has the chapter advertised. And so it, there is more that can be amended if the board desires. And I would remind, as we stated in the last public hearing, that the goal is to review and perhaps rewrite the noise ordinance during this year to bring it back before this board during the code amendment process next year. So some of these questions can be reconsidered. If there are problems or concerns, certainly we'll have a broader scope of review for that.
Thank you, Brian. And I think that may be a good time for us to reconsider that, and it would give the public more time to be able to weigh in. And what I could see by way of process, when we did have our first hearing, and Commissioners were making suggestions, and I remember staff asking, what should I do? And I said, well, let the Commissioners share. I didn't want them to feel limited by the comments of other Commissioners and not sharing their ideas. But something that I think that can keep us from getting to this point is after every code section, we ask as their consensus on us considering that change. And so the, you have that before you, and so that can be considered when we have the second hearing and you provide that modification in the second packet to the public. I think that may help by way of process, and would make that procedure just more clear. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheffield, did you have any other questions regarding code?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. There were, yes, oh, yes, Commissioner Burrow. I'm sorry. I know, I have to make sure I see you. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
On this noise ordinance, as it's proposed now, is the current noise ordinance 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM?
I pray not. 11:00 PM is a little. At 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Okay, right. I'm sorry. That, it is done. I'm thinking of, well, there's, there's different timeframes for different things. But, so, in this noise ordinance, we are regulating lawn care, landscapers, individual homes, rather than commercial? Or in addition to commercial? Because, I mean, how do you tell somebody they can't cut their grass on a Sunday morning before 7:00, after 7:00 AM?
I perceive, yes, I perceive this code section regulates residential and commercial, okay, properties.
First of all, that's going to be police service for really a non-emergency situation. And, I mean, have we run this by police or public safety to see how they can enforce this?
Yes, ma'am. That was the original amendment for the 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And I perceive they've had opportunity to weigh in since this has been advertised.
I understand that it has been discussed. And just as a reminder, this was an ordinance that was put forth that, it was a Commissioner-sponsored ordinance that was actually sponsored by Commissioner Ott prior to his departure. And it would include both residential and commercial.
So is the consensus to change it to 9:00 AM on Sunday, or period?
There's no further discussion about that. Commissioner Sheffield conceded that we can address this when we look at the comprehensive overhaul to our noise ordinance. And that would give the public ample time to be able to weigh in on those potential changes to the hours.
Okay, so are we, what are we concerned for today, to vote?
For today, we are considering the amendment that's before you in the code book. It's particularly Section 5257, subsection 12. And if you have your BOC book, it's going to be on page 91.
Okay.
Yep, subsection 12. So what you see underlined is the code that's under consideration today.
Okay.
Do you have any further questions?
No, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We have multiple code sections to be considered today, Commissioners. And today, we are to adopt the amendments as proposed, or as, or not adopt as proposed. And as opposed to putting all of them before us at the same time, what I'd like to do is make a motion for us to accept the changes to the chapters that did not have any amendments. So if you look on the table that was provided in your agenda book, it lists specific sections that were amended. My presumption is from the conversation today, that there are no further questions. Chapter 6 regarding alcoholic beverages, Chapter 18 for building regulations, for Chapter 22 for cable communications, Chapter 10 for subdivisions, Chapter 18 for traffic vehicles and vehicles, and Chapter 122 for utilities. What I have.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, that would be Chapter 110 subdivisions and 118 traffic and vehicles.
110 subdivisions, yes. 118, traffic and vehicles. Is that what you have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Those are the ones where I didn't see any changes. Did you guys have any questions about those? I'd like for us to go ahead and approve those separately. So with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt the proposed amendments for Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages, Chapter 18, building regulations, Chapter 22, cable communications, Chapter 110, subdivisions, Chapter 118, traffic and vehicles, and Chapter 122, utilities. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right, all of those in favor, may you please raise your hand. All right, the motion passes 5-0. And what I'll do is, I'll take the rest of these sections, one by one, for individual adoption, since there were changes that were made, and the revisions that were published. And then I believe there's still one outstanding matter to discuss, which is the 134-221. All right, so the first one is environment. We have revisions to Section 50-105B4 to add ore activity. Then we have a revision to 50-257, subsection 12, to add chainsaws, and to also add in residentially zoned parcels. Then there's also just an administrative change to the time of 7:00 AM to add the two zeros after the colon.
Madam Chair, I would make, I would make a motion to approve the two, Section 50, 105 and 257.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
All second.
Any discussions? All right, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. Code amendments to Section 50 are approved by all Commissioners, yes.
Just, just so I'm clear on the process, right now, are we only accepting the revisions and then going to go back and accept Chapter 50 in its entirety?
That's what we're doing now. Thank you. Why don't we go ahead and just accept Chapter 50? Well, let me get some clarification from the County Attorney. We've only had those two revisions to the, those two sections. Do we go ahead and just accept those specifically? Or should we just go ahead and accept the entire chapter with, with?
With the revisions accepted?
Including the proposed revisions.
Okay. Well, I think at this stage, since you just approved the revisions, I think now you can go ahead and move and approve the entire chapter.
I'm sorry, Bill, I didn't.
As I understood the vote that just took place, you just approved the revisions. So now, if you want to approve the entire chapter as revised, then that would be fine.
We didn't finish the motion, but we'll finish it on the two revisions, and then we'll adopt the whole chapter. Okay. So all in favor of adopting those two revisions as stated by Commissioner Burrow, again, please raise your hand, if you're in favor. Okay, the motion passes 5-0. So I'll move that we adopt Chapter 50 as revised.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you. And moving forward, I'll just conflate both motions. The next chapter will be for Chapter 54, for Fire Prevention and Protection. And my motion is for us to adopt changes, to, well, to approve Chapter 54 with the following changes, with the change to 54-52 to add 105, to adopt the change 54-64B to update the definition of occupancy, and to update the change 54-65B to replace or with and, to adopt the change 54 to, excuse me, 54-65C to add the owner and occupant shall be responsible for maintaining AEDs in an approved location in accordance with manufacturer recommendations and applicable laws. And finally, to also include the revision to 54-65I to add Sections 54-63 through 54-65 shall apply to commercial businesses that obtain a certificate of occupancy issued and dated on or after March 9, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, the motion passes 5-0. Next, we'll move on to Chapter 66 for Historic Preservation. The motion is to adopt the Historic Preservation Code with the revisions that are listed to 66-59, to add no less than 10 days and no more than 20. To also include the revision to 6682, to revise the language in order to bring the code in line with the Department of Community Affairs Model Ordinance. And similar revisions to 66-83 and 66-85 to incorporate revisions to bring the code in line with Georgia's Department of Community Affairs Model Ordinance. Is there a second?
Commissioner?
And there are also 66-1 regarding definitions and 6657.
Okay, I don't have that.
Madam Chair, those were not changes. What you have here today, those are only the changes that have been made since the first revision. So those were included in the first. So if you adopt 66 in its entirety, it'll include those.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion? Any discussion from Commissioners or questions? All right, all of those in favor of adopting the changes to, to Section 66 as revised, please raise your hand. Okay, all right. Yes. If you're in favor of adopting the revisions, please raise your hand. I saw three. Okay. All of those opposed, please raise your hand. The motion passes 3-2 with Commissioners Richardson and Commissioner Gamble in opposition. Okay, next, we're going to move on to Chapter 78 for licenses, permits, and businesses.
Commissioner, now we need to do Chapter 66. You accepted the revisions of Chapter 66. Now what we have to do?
I stated to adopt the chapter with revisions to the specific sections that I read.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Chapter 78, Licenses, Permits, and Businesses. I move that we adopt the changes to, that we accept that chapter for license, permits, and businesses with the following change to add Community Development Department. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, the motion passes 5-0. Next, we'll move on to Chapter 106. My motion is that we approve or accept Chapter 106 for street sidewalks and other places with the following changes. With the corresponding change to 106, subsection 186, to change applicant to permutee, and to also clarify procedures for repair or replacement of non-county-owned poles, and to provide for a 10-day notice period for repairs or placements as listed in our code amendments and revisions. Oh, thank you, Commissioner. Also, including subsection 106-3 for changes to correct emissions and designating certain language to be revised, as, excuse me, to. language to be revised, excuse me, designate certain language being new and revised, and to add new subparagraph EE to require uniform depths for all buried utilities, and to revise the first sentence of subparagraph FF to clarify resurfacing requirements. Is there a second? Thank you, Commissioner. Any discussion or questions? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, the motion passes 5-0. Before I make a motion for this one, I still have some questions regarding the ROD and what's being offered here today. I'm seeing in my book that we're keeping the code section, and it states that we will not accept new applications after today's hearing. Is that the understanding that everyone?
What's in the book currently, Madam Chair, says March 1, but Commissioner Burrell has recommended making it today's date, and we certainly support that.
I see.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I help answer your question?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Chair Cupid, so essentially the PRD code, which was a code used back in the 90s, is still in our code, but there's a line in there that pretty much says that they would not take any new applications after, I think it was a date in 97 if I'm remembering correctly. So my understanding is essentially what Comdev is proposing is, you know, we leave it in the code, but then have it inserted there that no new applications would be taken as of, with Commissioner Burrell's recommendation, today's date.
As of February 9, 2021?
Correct. And that I would support.
Are Commissioners comfortable with? Okay, I'll make the motion to add that language. Thank you, Commissioner Burrell, for that clarification as well. I saw, my book states March 1, but your proposal, when you had your comments, was to add today's date. Okay, so with that, I will make-
Upon approval, we're effective immediately today. So we're leaving the code in, we're just making the date revision for new applications.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so with that, I move that we accept Chapter 134 with the following revisions, to modify 134-221.2 for the redevelopment overlay district, to add the language commencing February 9, 2021, no new applications for ROD shall be accepted by the Board of Commissioners. And we'll just add that the capitalized Board and Commissioners in that code section administratively. Also including a revision to 134-290 for the also road design guidelines, to make reference to, code makes reference to guidelines to provide for the applicability and process for amendment to guidelines within that code section. To also make changes to 134-312 to change building to structure and the definition of banner per PC recom, okay, excuse me, we'll strike the per PC recommendation, to change building to structure.
And delete.
However, to remove, yes, to delete, yes, delete 575.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. To delete I-575 specifically in the definition of major roads. Also for 134-314 to add clarifying language, to add except blade signs specifically that may project 48 inches. And for 134-321 to change the maximum, well, there's a question here, but I'm not going to include that section. I'm gonna, we're gonna vote on that specifically. I have further questions. Also to, my motion is already to include the whole chapter. I'm gonna add that, but we may have additional discussion. To accept changes as provided for 134 subsection 321 to allow the maximum allowable sign area to one square foot per one linear foot, to no more than 100 square feet for one interior buildings or buildings under 30 feet in height. To also include the change, no more than 150 square feet for buildings exceeding two stories, or over, or for buildings over 30 feet in height. And where the building is set back more than 200 feet from the right-of-way, one- and two-story building signs may need, may be no more than 150 square feet, and 200 square feet for buildings exceeding two stories. Also to accept revisions to 134-322 to change the section heading to non-residential uses on residential properties and apartment and residential subdivision signs, and to also add except apartment and residential subdivision signs in 134-322B. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I do have, yes. Go ahead, Commissioner Burrell.
Oh, I'm sorry, you go ahead. I didn't.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I was letting you know I was, did have some discussion.
Yes, so we've had discussion prior to us approving the individual chapters, for us to accept staff's recommendation to be in line with the request of the variance board. If we accepted staff recommendations for 134-321, we would accept the recommendation of one square foot per one linear foot with 150 and 200 square feet max, depending on building height. That was included in the first revision of code. Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, and I apologize, the document here says one square foot per one linear foot.
Yes, ma'am.
And we had talked about that as a potential compromise at the planning commission, but in researching that further, since this document was published and put forth to you all, you know, and talking with John Peterson, the one per one was something that was tried in the past and resulted in a lot of variances. So staff is reverting to its previous recommendation of two square feet per one linear foot, and I apologize that we didn't get that corrected in here.
Okay.
So Chair Cupid, you would essentially, what Jessica's saying is the email that we got from Commissioner Burrell that outlined what staff was proposing. I have that here from-
Yes, because I don't have Commissioner Burrell's email. I am looking at Commissioner Burrell's email for all to see.
And Madam Chair, that was staff's, that was in our original code packet from staff's recommendation, the first, before it was revised by a planning commission comment. But Jessica's now saying that we're not, we're not doing one linear foot. If Jessica could read staff's recommendation into the record, that's what I would like-
I would say if yours is consistent with staff, I will allow Jessica to read that language in.
Yes, ma'am, and it is, it's, it's consistent with the email that Commissioner Burrell sent out last night, and I'm gonna read it directly from Package 1, the first draft that was sent out, so that way we're clear. It's exactly what we had on the first stab at this. Let me flip to that page real quick. So staff recommendation for Section 134-321, and this would be paragraph E, is that the maximum sign area for a wall sign or awning sign for each occupant or tenant shall be calculated as follows. One for each, for each one linear foot of the wall or building along each face of the building devoted to each occupant or tenant, two square feet of sign area is allowed on that face, up to a maximum of 150 square feet for a building one or two stories in height or under 20 feet, and a maximum of 200 square feet for a building over two stories or over 20 feet in height. In a multi-tenant center, wall signs shall be affixed to the walls, parentheses, front, side, or rear of the tenant or sign applicant's actual tenant space.
All right, so-
Second.
Okay, so with that, with that, before you second that, I move that we amend the standing motion to include the language that Jessica provided, to amend Section 134-321.
E.
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 Is there a second?
All second.
Okay. Any questions or comment? Yeah, mm-hmm, yeah. Okay, so if there's no question or discussion, all of those in favor of us accepting Chapter 134 as revised with that additional change written by our director, Jessica Gwen, please raise your hand if you're in favor. Okay, are there any opposed? All right, the motion passes 5-0. And I just want some clarification from the county attorney. We made an amended motion to a standing motion. Is there any other action that needs to be taken on the initial motion?
No, that would just be part of the initial motion that you made regarding this section, correct?
All right, great. So I believe that concludes our code amendment process. I think that music was-
You would have to vote then now on the, on that initial motion that this be-
Okay.
Yeah.
So there was an initial motion that was standing to-
Was it already? Hold on, hold on.
Yes.
I think-
I think if you have an amend, I think if you move to amend the motion, you don't.
No, you're fine.
Thank you. With that, I heard the music playing. I think we all need a break. Some of us might need a little bit more than that. Why don't we take a brief recess for about 5:00 to 10:50, and then come back and we'll resume the rest of our meeting. Thank you.
Jessica Renee here. Just for two seconds, this is my daughter Serenity. And I just wanted y'all to see her in all her glory real quick before I speak to you. I initially was coming to... Well, I'll say this first. I wanted to say thank you to Ms. Cupid. I so appreciate all the connections that you did for me or connecting me with myself and my family to help us get on this journey. Things are looking so amazing right now. So I definitely appreciate you.
Thank you.
So my words are going to sound maybe the opposite of what I'm just saying. So I wanted to say this to you first.
Sure, thank you.
My daughter, Serenity, will be 14 on February 14th. I'm going to start from the end because I know I have a short time and I want you all to understand why I'm kind of flustered, confused. When I... Every time I come into a community, my objective is to help. I have eight children and I understand that when you have children, they're going to be in the community one day. So we have to put our best foot forward. My home has been disrespected. Your Cobb County DeFacts showed up at my house, saying very aggressive, disgusting words to me and my children. When you're dealing with children, especially if you're coming from DeFacts... I'm saying this, I know that you all aren't DeFacts, but because this is why I know I can speak, this is why I'm here. When you're dealing with children, you have to be mindful of their mental stability. You have to be mindful of the impact that you're going to have on them later on. This female came to my house in the nighttime. I'm a mother of eight. I walked to my door with a knife in my hand, unknowing who's outside, sitting outside for 10 minutes. When she finally comes to the door, she lets me know she's from Cobb County DeFacts. I don't open my door because I don't deal with people. It's the nighttime. I ask her what's her complaint. She tells me she's got no complaint that my house is dirty. I have food over my floor. I have bags of clothes everywhere. Reason why I opened my door was because this female had the audacity to tell me that the complaint said that my daughter, Serenity, was being sex trafficked. This is the most disgusting thing I could hear through a door, especially. So I opened my door and allowed this woman in. For me, I work as a parent liaison with Put Back. That's called People United Together Bringing About Change. When I come up here, I don't talk about the nonprofit organizations that I work with and the work that I do with the community because I'm attempting to help other people. But I find it highly disrespectful and disgusting that it seems that everybody's so concerned with all these things, the children, under the vibes of COVID right now. Like, all these COVID things are happening, but you have all these people. The police showed up at my house. DeFacts showed up at my house. You all have seen me and my family here on numerous occasions. And because I opened my home to a female that actually came from this group of people, you all call her Nancy. Her name is... She's an African lady, so it's a different spelling of it. Last name starts with an M. But because she was upset that I wanted to understand how my house was flooded, the house that you all helped me get into, I'm on January 29th going to get a cake for my daughter, who just turned 12, walking to a house of feces flooding from my upstairs. Because she was inebriated and unable to communicate properly, she decided to leave. And upon leaving, she called DeFacts. Now, DeFacts to me, since they are supposed to think about the children, should have come into my house after I authorized them to talk to my children and say, hey, can I talk to Serenity? But what they did was embarrass my daughter. What they did was my daughter told me last night, which is why I changed why I wanted to speak, that she's been having nightmares ever since they showed up to my house. She cried on her knees, shaking, telling me, mommy, I've had nightmares that somebody is kidnapping me, tied me up and put me in a trunk of a car. But you all are worried about people. The children are part of the community as well. So when you all are doing your jobs and you're sending people out or you're sending police to do nonsense when right now how many showing up at my house about me having a knife in my house when Cobb County has 30% rate of... Excuse me. Crime rate right now is 30% up in Cobb County per what the police say. So you didn't come because I was damaging. The lady came and said everything looked fine. The children looked fine. But the police show up at my door because the DeFacts lady was afraid about a knife inside of my house. People are focused on the wrong things here. People are being displaced, taken from their homes, and the children already have a lot of mental things going on. And now people get to come into their home when they're finally safe and secure. So they thought...
Ms. Renee, I'm sorry, your time's up.
...and mess with their mental stability. I think we need to have a redirection of our energy is what this conversation is about. Thank you so much.
Davida Carter.
Good morning, Chair. Chairwoman Lisa Cupid and Commissioners Gamble, Richardson, Burrell, and Sheffield. Good morning and thank you for letting me speak again. I'm here. My name is Davida Carter and I'm here. I'm a South Cobb resident. And I'm here again speaking of the housing crisis in America, in Georgia, and especially in Cobb County. I would like to first thank you all for all the work that you did with the COVID-19, especially this past January 25th, all the extended things that you did for our community. It is very greatly appreciated. Let's see. According to the Atlanta Journal-Constitution, December 2020, the housing crisis will outlast the aid money. Housing crisis, while unemployment has soared and a lot of companies are not coming back because of the COVID-19, and this goes for homeowners and renters alike. There's a lot of need here in our community with the children for COVID relief, the children in schools, there's sheltering in place at home. If they lose their home, then they also lose their education. Also, the jobs. We know Cobb County hasn't opened up some of these jobs. HD Supply hasn't opened back up. A lot of these big companies and small companies alike are not going to open back up. So we are looking for some programs that can put some of these people that were displaced because of COVID and unemployment back into the workforce here, to put money back and tax money back into our community. Another thing I would like to... We must keep an eye on evictions. I'm going to read a little bit from the Georgia State University research that they did on the housing crisis here. And this is from Professor... Let me see. What's his name? Sorry, I wrote it down. Professor Dan Immergluck at Georgia State. He said that while the expanded unemployment insurance has helped boost the housing stability during the pandemic, if it runs out, we are going to have an eviction pandemic. This is something I've been speaking about several times. This is going to cause so much homelessness in our community. And we don't need just a Band-Aid. We actually need some resources other than just the rental assistance as far as affordable housing. In 1968, the Fair Housing Act was passed after the assassination of Martin Luther King Jr. And that Housing Act, HUD is allocated millions and millions of dollars every year for our communities. There are also community... We can look into community land trusts, community apartment buildings that can be... Whole buildings can be allocated for low income. Also, we have homeowners that are also suffering. They're out of work. Their hours have been cut back or they've been furloughed. So they also need some assistance with their homeownership because why should they lose their family home that they can pass on to their descendants? As an American, as a Cobb County constituent and voter, this concerns me because many of my family members are suffering because of COVID, because of not only just the disease, but also the economic impact that it has put on a lot of families here. A lot of things I would like to see... I would love to see a community garden in Cobb. I just learned how to grow vegetables last year and grew out of five-gallon pots. I gave free classes to my community members to show them how to germinate seeds and how to put this stuff in and plant so we can feed ourselves. Now, there are a lot of different things that we would like to do and we would love to partner with you guys if it's possible. I want to thank you all for giving me this time to speak and you all have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Monica Delancy.
Good morning. Monica Delancy, Riverside Community. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. First, I want to reference Black History Month. Black History Month is celebrated for the month of February, but we oftentimes say we celebrate 365 days a year. I want to start off with a quote from Shirley Chisholm. Let me see if I can share it just right. And Shirley Chisholm was our first black woman elected to Congress. And she says, if they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. So I want to start with that. In addition, I want to share today, February 9th, is 100 days of Cobb County School District being in school, traditional school calendar. Even though a lot of our students are at home, today is the 100th day of school. This morning, I read in the Mirror Daily Journal that Georgia Power has awarded Kennesaw State University a grant to encourage more black male educators. I want to state that's a very awesome, great program to have. February also is Parent Leadership Month. I do want to acknowledge that we do have some of our parent leaders here today that came out to the meeting and they said they wanted to learn more about being involved not only in the schools, but in the community, civic engagement. So thank you for coming to the meeting and staying through all the code amendments. I told them we wouldn't be here that long today, but they're sticking with it. I also wanted to just give updates from the Oprah Winfrey Grant that was awarded to We Thriving Riverside Rental Association. Last week, we were able to pass out 45 checks in an amount of $1,000 each. Most of the recipients reside in the Riverside community on Riverside Parkway. The children attend Pillbrook High School, South Cobb High School, Lindley Miller School, Lindley Sixth Grade Academy, Floyd Miller School, Silviview Elementary School, Bryant Elementary School, Clay Harmon Leland Elementary School, Riverside Elementary School. So just to know that these families, who will most likely get some of the help from the CARES Fund, they were able to not only receive an Oprah Winfrey, you know, grant, but I gave them a certificate as well because the check was turned in to the apartment complex. But they get to keep the certificate in mind now that Oprah Winfrey helped them with their rent. And I just wanted to say that it is, you know, most of this assistance is coming from the federal government and other people that's donating. It is a Band-Aid fit because long before the pandemic, and you've seen me here for years talking about the challenges of people, especially single-parent households, have in pain in keeping up with rent. Your Cobb County magistrate court was wall-to-wall with evictions before the pandemic with 300 people on a given Friday on the morning and afternoon waiting to hear their case. And most of the time, they were being heard because they either were just late a couple of days or they had to delay their payment. But because there's no recourse for that, you're going to be seen in eviction court. And most of the people that were seen were black women, Latino women, or black or Latino-led households. And I have to say this, I hope I don't insult anyone, but had it been Caucasian women or Caucasian families in and out of eviction courts for years and years, there would be a different story. There would be... Probably, there would have been an eviction task force at the tables before the pandemic because of the outrage that we could not... That was just... I could not believe that only black people could not pay their rent. Okay? Cobb County is supposed to be highly diverse. Cobb County have all of these factors, but yet the only people that were seen in eviction court were black women, Latino women, and families waiting to be evicted. So COVID-2020 has shown us, exposed us, that we're going to have to think long-term solutions, not just short-term solutions. The money that's coming down, we're going to have to be strategic and making sure that we're not going to go back to the normal or think it's okay to put families out. Okay? And I want to say that almost it was a year to the day. And I have to remind you that December 12th, 2019, when I was pulled out with my Christmas tree and my kids, that Oprah Winfrey called me almost a year to the day and said, I want to help you help families. And I thank Oprah Winfrey for that. I think I could have just gone, I could have hid, but I stayed the course. I stayed the course. And I'm going to leave you with an Oprah Winfrey quote.
Ms. Delancy, you're out of time.
Okay, well, you won't get the Oprah Winfrey quote, but thank you again for letting me share.
Kathy Scott.
Hello, Kelly. My name is Kathy Scott. I live in Walker's Ridge North in District 1. Recently, I found out that Cobb County is in negotiations with my homeowners association to take part of our land. There's a negotiation that our homeowners, which we have never... And I want to let you know, our homeowners association, the members, the people who live in the neighborhood, know nothing about this. I spoke with Kelly and I spoke with Mr. Breeden with the Stormwater Management Department. He read a letter to me from an attorney named Mr. Sands. The letter stated that in 1995, David Hankerson had agreed to take over our retention pond, detention pond, if we gave over our land. Now, we decided not to do that because we didn't want to give Cobb County our land. But we have an HOA right now that doesn't give us minutes. They won't give us financial documents. I researched recently and found out that the people who don't pay their dues... I know for a fact that there have been white people who have been... The one white guy has had his dues, his fines waived. They have sued three families in my neighborhood. Every one of them are black. And I found out that the declarations that we are being used right now, they were never even voted on. This board just filed them. And so we have been trying to find out this stuff. And we had a guy who recently ran for office.
If it runs out, we are going to have an eviction pandemic. This is something I've been speaking about several times. This is going to cause so much homelessness in our community. And we don't need just a Band-Aid. We actually need some resources other than just the rental assistance as far as affordable housing. In 1968, the Fair Housing Act was passed after the assassination of Martin Luther King Jr. And that Housing Act, HUD is allocated millions and millions of dollars every year for our communities. There are also community, we can look into community land trusts, community apartment buildings that can be, whole buildings can be allocated for low income. Also, we have homeowners that are also suffering. They're out of work, their hours have been cut back, or they've been furloughed. So they also need some assistance with their home ownership because why should they lose their, their family home that they can pass on to their descendants? As an American, as a Cobb County constituent and voter, this concerns me because many of my family members are suffering because of COVID. Because of not only just the disease, but also the economic impact that it has put on a lot of families here. A lot of things I would like to see, I would love to see a community garden in Cobb. I just learned how to grow vegetables last year and grew out of five-gallon pots. I gave free classes to my community members to show them how to germinate seeds and how to put this stuff in and plant so we can feed ourselves. Now, there are a lot of different things that we would like to do and we would love to partner with you guys if it's possible. I want to thank you all for giving me this time to speak, and you all have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Monica Delancey?
Good morning. Monica Delancey, Riverside Community, thank you for allowing me to speak today. First, I want to reference Black History Month. Black History Month is celebrated for the month of February, but we oftentimes say we celebrate 365 days a year. I want to start off with a quote from Shirley Chisholm. Let me see if I can share it just right. And Shirley Chisholm was our first black woman elected to Congress, and she says, "If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair." So, I want to start with that. In addition, I want to share, today, February 9th, is 100 days of Cobb County School District being in school, traditional school calendar, even though a lot of our students are at home. Today is the 100th day of school. This morning, I read in the Mirror Daily Journal that Georgia Power has awarded Kennesaw State University a grant to encourage more black male educators. I want to state that's a very awesome, great program to have. February also is Parent Leadership Month. I do want to acknowledge that we do have some of our parent leaders here today that came out to the meeting, and they said they wanted to learn more about being involved not only in the schools, but in the community civic engagement. So, thank you for coming to the meeting and staying through all the code amendments. I told them we wouldn't be here that long today, but they're sticking with it. I also wanted to just give updates from the Oprah Winfrey Grant that was awarded to We Thriving Riverside Rental Association. Last week, we were able to pass out 45 checks in an amount of $1,000 each. Most of the recipients reside in the Riverside community on Riverside Parkway. The children attend Pearl Brook High School, South Cobb High School, Lindley Miller School, Lindley Sixth Grade Academy, Floyd Miller School, Silview Elementary School, Bryant Elementary School, Clay Harmon Leland Elementary School, Riverside Elementary School. So, just to know that these families, who will most likely get some of the help from the CARES Fund, they were able to not only receive an Oprah Winfrey, you know, grant, but I gave them a certificate as well, because the check was turned in to the apartment complex, but they get to keep the certificate in mind now that Oprah Winfrey helped them with their rent. And I just wanted to say that it is, you know, most of this assistance is coming from the federal government and other people that's donating. It is a Band-Aid fit, because long before the pandemic, and you've seen me here for years talking about the challenges of people that especially single-parent households have in paying and keeping up with rent. Your Cobb County magistrate court was wall-to-wall with evictions before the pandemic, with 300 people on a given Friday, on the morning and afternoon, waiting to hear their case. And most of the time, they were being heard because they either were just late a couple of days, or they had to delay their payment, but because there's no recourse for that, you're going to be seen in eviction court. And most of the people that were seen were black women, Latino women, or black or Latino-led households. And I have to say this, I hope I don't insult anyone, but had it been Caucasian women or Caucasian families in and out of eviction courts for years and years, there would be a different story. There would be, probably there would have been an eviction task force at the tables before the pandemic because of the outrage that we could not, that was just, I could not believe that only black people could not pay their rent, okay? Cobb County is supposed to be highly diverse. Cobb County have all of these factors, but yet, the only people that were seen in eviction court were black women, Latino women, and families waiting to be evicted. So, COVID-2020 has shown us, exposed us, that we're going to have to think long-term solutions, not just short-term solutions. The money that's coming down, we're going to have to be strategic and making sure that we're not going to go back to the normal or think it's okay to put families out, okay? And I want to say that almost, it was a year to the day. And I have to remind you that December 12th, 2019, when I was pulled out with my Christmas tree and my kids, that Oprah Winfrey called me almost a year to the day and said, "I want to help you help families." And I thank Oprah Winfrey for that. I think I could have just gone, I could have hid, but I stayed the course. I stayed the course, and I'm going to leave you with an Oprah Winfrey quote.
Ms. Delancey, you're out of time.
Okay, well, you won't get the Oprah Winfrey quote, but thank you again for letting me share.
Kathy Scott?
Hello, Kelly. My name is Kathy Scott. I live in Walkers Ridge North in District 1. Recently, I found out that Cobb County is in negotiations with my homeowners association to take part of our land. There's a negotiation that our homeowners, which we have never, and I want to let you know, our homeowners association, the members, the people who live in the neighborhood, know nothing about this. I spoke with Kelly, and I spoke with Mr. Breeden with the Stormwater Management Department. He read a letter to me from an attorney named Mr. Sands. The letter stated that in 1995, David Hankerson had agreed to take over our retention pond, detention pond, if we gave over our land. Now, we decided not to do that, because we didn't want to give Cobb County our land. But we have an HOA right now that doesn't give us minutes. They won't give us financial documents. I researched recently and found out that the people who don't pay their dues, I know for a fact that there have been white people who have been, the one white guy has had his dues, his fines waived. They have sued three families in my neighborhood. Every one of them are black. And I found out that the declarations that we are being used right now, they were never even voted on. This board just filed them. And so, we have been trying to find out this stuff. And we had a guy who recently ran for office, this wonderful African-American man. Do you know what they did? They ended up telling him he didn't get to serve as president. They put two white guys in there too, that none of us, we didn't, we don't even know what the vote was, and he ended up resigning. We don't know what the vote is, we don't know what's going on. So now, there's all this stuff going on, we don't get to see financial documents. Next thing I know, I file a Freedom of Information Act for this document that was read to me from Mr. Sands, and I was denied the document. I copied Kelly. Kelly sends me an email and says, "You need to request that document through the public documents." I requested it, did you know what, if I got it, I did not. Why is it that Cobb, so why is David Hankerson? And in fact, I said to Mr. Breeden, "David Hankerson, why is he involved? Is he even, I didn't even know if he was still alive." He said, "Yeah, I talked to him a few days ago." Why is David Hankerson involved in my subdivision? And Breeden said, "Yeah, we've decided that this document, this letter that was written by Hankerson in 95, we're going to allow you guys to give us our land now, 30 years later." Well, we don't want that, but we don't even get a chance to even do anything with it because Cobb County is hiding this document, won't let us see it. And Kelly told me, "Well, I'll let the county attorney look at it." Why can't I let my attorney look at it? Why are you guys denying me the right to see that document? Why are you guys negotiating and stealing our land? I want to know why Kelly won't give me that letter from Mr. Sands. I want to know why Cobb County Attorney is negotiating with a lawyer. I want to know why David Hankerson is involved. And I want to know why you're stealing Walkers Ridge North land. When I told you, and I've told Kelly, who's my district commissioner, no one in our subdivision knows about this, and you have to have two-thirds vote to get rid of that land.
I'm sorry to interject. I rarely do this in public comment, but I just find for decorum, if you can please refer to her as Commissioner Gambrell.
I apologize.
Thank you.
It's very hard for me to feel this, to hear you say that. My land is being stolen, and what you're telling me is, "Thank you for telling me all this, thank you for telling me there's racism going on in your neighborhood." Make sure you call her Commissioner. That's what I'm getting out of this. Thank you. I'll make sure that I understand my place. Because it's business as usual, isn't it, in Cobb County? You just hide documents, Commissioner Gambrell. Why can't I see that document?
Ms. Scott, I'm sorry, your time's up. Has Hill Wright came back?
Yeah.
Mr. Wright?
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I have three topics I'd like to address. First, I'd like to give a real-world account of the Select Cobb Small Business Grant Program from the perspective of a small business owner. My wife was diagnosed with advanced-stage breast cancer. So, I put my wife first, and she had my business so I could stay in town and be her caregiver. She was at a high risk for strokes, and we made five emergency trips during her treatment. We made it through it, so I began to rebuild my business in 2020. And it was going, 2020 was going to be the year we recovered financially. I won a contract that would carry us into 2021 and started work on the last, in the last quarter of 2019. But because of delays in payment and invoices, none of the 2019 work was paid until January 2020. Then COVID hit in March, and the project was suspended. So then, the Cobb Small Business Grants were announced. I appeared in May before this board, before the grant program was set up. I pleaded to consider 2020 income in case of hardship in 2019. The purpose of the grant was to help replace some of the 2020 income lost, not 2019 income. The purpose, but the rules were set up based on 2019 income. The applicant asked, the application asked, "Why do you need the grant?" I explained the hardship in 2019, the delay in payment into 2020, and how I had to work through 2020 that was interrupted by COVID in March. Midway in the program, the rules were changed to include an income test. Apparently, it was more important to make sure that no one had a windfall from the grant than to make sure the program did not deny help to small businesses. I had a partial grant awarded from the Select Cobb Grant for about two weeks of income. Businesses that received the federal PPP loans were not supposed to qualify for the Cobb PPP grant, but were allowed. According to the number Select Cobb presented to this board, they were awarded about 85% of the funds that the business originally had received federal PPP grants. The remaining qualified small businesses got the scraps. The moral of the story is, one size doesn't fit all, and these programs need to be compassionately run in the future to make sure no one falls through the crack. To add insult to injury, I can't seem to renew my business license. I have submitted the same financial report for several years showing each invoice paid during the year for the business. But this year, my application rejected it, and I received an email from Missra Schultz that says, "We will need financials that report a 12-month period. The financials that were provided only provide three months. We will need an affirmation in writing that the revenue the business collected within the missing nine months." Perhaps Missra Schultz should be furloughed for nine months so she can figure out where the remaining nine months went. This is completely out of touch with the struggles of small business during a pandemic. I still haven't gotten my business license. I want to give you a quick update on the proposed Nexus Garden Development I-75. This is the development of City of Marietta in a Cobb neighborhood that will dump high-density traffic through the neighborhood and share the single-point access to Powers Ferry Road. The applicant submitted a traffic study that did not include all of the proposed development. We obtained an email from the City of Marietta signing off on the study. We in the community did our own analysis and found five pages of problems. We supplied the analysis to Cobb and Georgia DOT. We received the study the Friday before the Tuesday hearing, and on the Monday before the hearing, the applicant dumped stipulations, a stipulations letter that includes a variance for the fire safety code.
Mr. Wright, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Only to have one ASX point, and the hearing was delayed.
Mr. Wright, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Chairwoman, that concludes the speakers for this morning.
Thank you. With that, we are going to go to our consent agenda. The items on our consent agenda have been scrolled at the beginning of this meeting, and will be scrolled at its conclusion. But that will forego scrolling it during this particular time that we address this tab. However, we do have three items to be added to consent agenda. The first is Agenda Item Number 44, which is to approve a settlement of workers' compensation claim on behalf of Pierre Hillman. Agenda Item Number 45 is to approve a settlement of a workers' compensation claim on behalf of Angela Davenport. And Agenda Item 46 is to approve a settlement of workers' compensation claim on behalf of Acharne Cotton Wen. Is there a motion that we add these to our consent agenda? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes 5-0. With that, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised? Is there a?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all of those in favor, may you please raise your hand? Thank you, the motion passes 5-0. With that motion, I did not authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. May I have a motion to add that as well? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, may you raise your hand? Okay, motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Next, we'll move into our regular Board of Commissioners tabs. Before we go into the next tab for the Sheriff's Office, there is a motion to add another Agenda Item Number 39 to the Support Services Regular Agenda tab pertaining to property management to authorize a fund balance appropriation to supplement funding for purchase of a cabinet shop from the 2016 SLOSH Project 0910. May I get a motion that we add that for consideration?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those?
Yes. Is that number 43 or 39?
I have that as number 39. It was presented yesterday prior to the addition of the workers' compensation claim.
Chair, I think 40, 39 was.
That's on regular.
Okay.
Correct.
I'm sorry, hold on for me, Commissioner Burrell, I'm speaking to Bill.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item Number 39 was revised, but it was part of the book. But then, Item 43 was the add-on for property management.
Okay, so the add-on is item Number 43. Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Bill is confirming what you stated, that's number 43. I may have my numbers out of sync, so why don't we go ahead? And can we make a clerk's note to refer to that as opposed to another motion? Okay, thank you.
And Madam Chair, that's a regular item, correct?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay.
It's a regular item, yep. Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll go to our Sheriff's tab.
Can we vote on the motion, please? Vote, can we vote on that motion to add those items?
Okay, I thought we did, but perhaps I missed that. Okay, so I move that we add those additional items to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
No, the regular agenda.
To the reg, I'm sorry.
Just 43 is going to regular.
And 39 would be the revision.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell, thank you, Attorney Rowling. Let's go ahead, and we will formally add Number 43 to the property management, from Property Management to Support Services.
So moved.
Thank you. All of those, any discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Yes, Sheriff.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. I will be brief. That's something you don't hear a lot of here, right, being brief? But I will be today. I'll bring for you today a 2016 SLOSH proposal to move money into the Sheriff's Office Capital Fund for replacement of vehicles. The Board of Commissioners authorized use of available vehicle state contracts through Softwell, formerly known as NJPA, and other contracted pricing agents for the procurement and/or replacement of vehicles per fleet management prioritized vehicle placement schedule in an amount not to exceed $1 million. Authorize of corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chair to execute the necessary documentation. So this morning, I'm asking that that be executed and move that money over to the capital replacement fund in the Sheriff's Office from the 2016 SLOSH.
All right, I move that we adopt this item as presented. Is there a second? Is there any discussion or questions? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, Sheriff, the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we're moving on to our DOT Regular Tab.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman.
Good morning, it's not afternoon, it's late, but it's not afternoon.
Sorry about that. Transportation, we have six items for consideration. The first item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 1 final to the contract with Accelera Construction LLC savings to the project in the amount of $18,523.64 for drainage system repairs on Janet Lane.
Yes, Commissioner Sheffield?
I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 33.
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Lawson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $3,435,631.85 for roadway improvements on Canton Road Corridor, project number X2602, and Canton Road at Shallowford Road Highland Terrace.
Yes, Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor, excuse me, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 1 final to the contract with Accelera Construction LLC savings to the project in the amount of $17,419.65 for drainage system repairs on Seaberry Court.
Commissioner Sheffield?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number 1 final to the contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises, Inc., in savings to the project in the amount of $21,994.12 for drainage system repairs on Powers Ferry Road at Interstate North Parkway.
Commissioner Richardson?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 36.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA 32-3-4, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel for acres of Mill Road managed lanes access.
Commissioner Richardson?
Sorry. Motion to approve Agenda Item 37.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, ma'am. And our last item for consideration is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve project number X2751-ToeNumber1 to the 2020 Master Task Order Contract with CDM Smith, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $96,752 for preliminary engineering design for Shaw Road Sidewalks.
Commissioner Burrell?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes 5-0. All right, that takes us to, thank you, Erica. That takes us to our Support Services tab.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Our item this morning is a joint item with Property Management and Fleet Management to request the Board of Commissioners approve a project agreement for the installation of the county's Enterprise Access Control and Surveillance System at the new Fleet Car Shop located at 1940 County Services Parkway. This project is an eligible project under the 2016 SLOSH Support Services Facilities Improvements Program X0920. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the project agreement with Controlled Access, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $74,775. Authorize a 10% contingency fund in an amount not to exceed $7,477.50. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
All right, so moved. Any discussion? Those in favor, please raise your hand. Those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we're moving to our Department of Public Safety tab. Thank you, appreciate that. I do not want to approve Agenda Item number forty-three today, and we have been working on this for so long, this should have been Agenda Item number one.
Well, good morning Chairwoman.
Good morning Scott.
Commissioners and County Manager. Property Management has one item, and it's the Board of Commissioners authorize a fund balance appropriation in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars in the general fund, authorize an inter-fund transfer to the 2016 Splotch Project X oh-nine-one-oh, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just discuss and again say, I'm so happy to see this move forward, really am, and it's been a long time coming and certainly deserves, especially with all the great work your team does for all of us across the county. So with that, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes five-zero.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you. Now we're ready for the DPS tab.
Hello Madam Chair, Commissioners, County Manager.
Good morning.
Fire only has one item for consideration today, and it's our recommendation the Board of Commissioners approve a memorandum of understanding between Cobb County and Cobb Douglas Public Health for COVID-19 specimen collection, vaccination, and storage, as well as authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chair to execute the necessary documents.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, that takes us to our next public comment. Oh no, excuse me, we have appointments before that. Commissioner Burrell, we have Agenda Item number forty-one for your district.
Um, yes, thank you. I would like to announce that I am appointing Deborah Dance to the Planning Commission for District Three.
Right.
Um, it's, I'd welcome her back to the county-
Yes.
-in this capacity, I think she'll be a fantastic board member, and um, she's got some big shoes to fill in replacing Judy Williams, so welcome to Deborah. Um, do you want me to do the next-
Yes, you can do your item number forty-two.
Yes, and I'd like to announce the appointment of David Person to the Transit Advisory System Board, and he will be replacing Wes Ruff, and I want to thank Wes for his service and commitment, and welcome David.
Thank you Commissioner. And I know I talked to Commissioners about another appointment which I just need to announce during my comments, during my address. So with that, we're on to our next tab for public comment.
There's no further persons that signed up, sure.
Oh, okay, great. Alright, so that takes us to our Commissioners' Public Address, and we will start off with Commissioner Gambrell.
And here we have where you can submit your RSVP for children's book bundle from the North Cobb Library. They will be taking requests for picture books, you can fill out a form, they will then go out and pick out picture books that fit your request, they will pack them up in a bundle, and give you a little goody bag as you pick them up and enjoy them with your family. So be sure to go to www.cobbcounty.org library to learn more about this program. Congratulations to Josie Johnson who won the Cobb County Sixth Grade Horse CPA. This was a great week for her and our 4-H program. The Cobb 4-H Junior Horse Quiz Bowl Team placed first in the Virtual Horse Quiz Bowl Qualifier. Eighty-three juniors competed on thirteen teams. This team, our Cobb County team, has advanced to compete in the State Horse Quiz Bowl Contest, which is this Saturday, February thirteenth. Next slide Brad. They are coached by Jennifer Stevens Johnson, who is quoted as saying, "I have been coaching the Cobb County 4-H Horse Bowl Team this season, we had ten juniors and one senior. Saturday, they competed with eighty-three juniors, fourth through eighth graders, all over the state." Again, congratulations to Josie Johnson who won the junior division, and Finn Johnson who was second in the junior division as well. And best of all, congratulations to all of our 4-Hers. And our next slide is our 4-H Archery Team. The Cobb County 4-H Archery Team competed in the Georgia 4-H Virtual Winner Tournament. The team members are also members of the Kennesaw Archery Club and conducted their competition at the Boot Ward Recreation Center, so thank you to our Parks Department for seeing this to happen. All final scores were submitted to the Georgia 4-H for the virtual tournament. Three hundred and one 4-Hers from twenty-five counties competed, and we had six overall winners from Cobb County, so congratulations to all, thank you.
Yes. Alright, so just to go through the slides here, we've got, Board Appointment Interviews have concluded, we had two-hundred-and-sixty-seven applicants, eighty-five interviews, and we will be making those final announcements for selected positions in this coming, in the next meeting. The main call-out here is, I had a group of individuals from the community to help do all of these interviews and get the word out about the applications, so I want to give a huge thank you to Byron Stewart, Chinida Allen, James Jackson, Janet Rao, Patricia Fulton, Toni Lucadamo, and of course, my absolutely amazing administrative assistant who is not listed on here, Aliya Kurjou. So this could not have been successful without everyone's participation, and I just want to say thank you. Next slide, we've got, just wanted to give a shout-out to all of our Board Appointees from the last meeting where I did all of the announcements and approvals, so just so that you can match a face to a name and see who I've selected to represent, at least for these particular boards. As I mentioned, in the next meeting, we'll have several more announced as well. Next slide, wanted to do another call-out, so we currently have the Priorities Tour that's going on right now, as many already know, I have this long list of things that I think are important to District Two, but the tour is meant for me to share that with your organization or your HOA, whatever your group may be, if it's at least five people, please set up some time, book my calendar, it is public, and I will introduce all of those priorities to you, and we will have a nice fun conversation about what to take out, what to add in, what to change. So, just want to reiterate that that tour ends at the end of February. And, next slide, so we did introduce a nomination form for people that you would like to recommend, or not recommend, but nominate within your community, is giving some kind of shout-out, and the very first one that came in was for Erica Parrish and her team at Cobb DOT. The quote was, "I've put in numerous requests for pothole repair and consistently, the work is completed in twenty-four hours." So just want to give a shout-out, and there is a team provided by, a picture provided by DOT's, Cobb DOT, just so that you can see everyone's hard work there, and just want to reiterate and say thank you for all the wonderful work that Cobb DOT does, and if you have someone that you want to highlight, please fill out the form, it's just the link that's on the newsletter. Next slide, Library Updates, so there is a new website that we had shared, that's the link for it, but in commemoration of Black History Month, the library has also put together a list of important books for all ages, so please partake in that, enjoy it, and give us your feedback. And lastly, for our, for today's public address, just wanted to say thank you to everyone that participated in the Johnson-Vary-Shallowford zoning Z-72 issue that's on the docket, we had a town hall, over four hundred people registered for that, we had over two hundred stay with us the entire time, which went over an hour discussing all of the different pieces of that particular case, and do know that we are still tagging all of the emails as they come in, and we have compiled and assessed all of the comments as well from the community, and that has been supplied to the developer to make those changes within their proposed or idea, their idea of the site plan. So do be on the lookout for more information on when that group is ready to come back to the table, but also thank you to my Planning Commissioner Toni Wabright and Attorney Kevin Moore who represented the development that's taking place there, to be there to address all questions as they appeared, so, thank you all.
We'll go to Commissioner Burrell next.
Thank you ma'am. First, I would like to extend our deepest sympathy and condolences to the family of Wallace Coopwood. Wallace was a dear friend for twenty-five years, and he passed away February first, and the services will be, the viewing will be this Thursday at Willie Watkins Historic West End Chapel in Atlanta, and from two to the sixth, and then his service on Friday at eleven a.m. at the location. Wallace was a respected leader in this, in our Cobb community, he served on many boards, the Hospital Authority Board for Cobb General, the State Driver Services Board, and was very active with our youth in Cobb, and many other organizations, Kiwanis, Marietta Kiwanis. He was a dear friend, he was a lobbyist down at the Capitol, and we worked together for many years, and he will be missed, so condolences to his family and friends. As we celebrate Black History Month, the NAACP Cobb Branch at six oh-eight Roswell Street, I'm sorry, six oh-five Roswell Street, is having an open house the next two Saturdays, and also other events on here, and their regular meeting on the twenty-third at the Strand at seven p.m. So visit your local chapter and see what all they have in store for you down there. We've had a couple of, we've had a couple of pet adoptions before the shelter had to close, and that's the next slide, but Mr. Stanley Williams, Brad, can you pull up the next picture, I think his picture's on the next slide maybe, no? Yeah. Mr. Stanley Williams, who served in the U.S. Navy, has, for seven years, has just adopted his new best friend, a one-and-a-half-year-old Norwich Terrier. Thank you for your service and thank you for adopting. And we also have Mr. Day, a twenty-year dedicated service to the U.S. Navy and Navy Reserves, and he adopted this handsome fellow as his new best friend, and I'm not sure what he is, what type, what breed. Some sad news, the shelter will be closed until further notice, we are waiting on the test results from a couple of animals in the shelter to return from UGA, and all the adoptions, visitations, and non-emergency surgeries have been put on hold, and we will keep you updated as to when we can start rescheduling appointments to go up to the shelter, so thank you for your patience. Registration is open for spring classes at The Art Place on Sandy Plains. Classes will be held February twenty-second through March twenty-ninth, and include pottery, glass fusing, drawing, painting, and outdoor theater. The Art Place is located at thirty-three thirty Sandy Plains Road in our Mountain View Complex, and you can visit artplacemarietta.org for more information. Our 4-Hers and Extension Office are busy this time of year getting ready for their annual plant sale fundraiser, the proceeds do go to race funds for 4-H development and A&amp;R programming, so get your orders in, there's information on their website of to order and the pickup locations, and we hope you will participate. Cobb Senior Services will be holding another drive-up for Cobb residents ages sixty and older to get shelf-stable food from eleven till noon while supplies last this Friday, February twelfth and February twenty-sixth. You do need an ID showing your date of birth and your Cobb County home address, but you don't need an appointment, you just drive up to the Senior Center at eleven fifty Powder Springs Street. Also, you can help by donating staples to items for them to, for this program, and you would need to call seven-seven-zero-five-two-eight-two-zero-zero-nine, or visit cobseniors.org for more information on how you can donate. And that's all I have, Madam Chair, I would just like to wish everyone a Happy Valentine's Day this Sunday, and reach out to all your loved ones, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Sheffield?
Mm-hmm. Do we have the slides? Next slide. In celebration of Black History or American History, I like to draw attention to an inventor by the name of Garrett Morris. In nineteen sixteen, he patented a safety hood, a personal breathing device that protected minors and firefighters from smoke and harmful gases. It became the precursor of the gas mask used by soldiers during World War One, but he's most known for his invention of the stop sign. After witnessing a car and buggy crash, he was inspired to create a traffic light that had three signals, stop, go, and stop in all directions to allow pedestrians to cross the street safely. It wasn't until later that we incorporated the yellow light that we see today. His invention was patented in nineteen twenty-three, and he eventually sold his design for a mere forty thousand dollars to General Electric. I know it, forty thousand, next slide. And litter cleanup, we, you know, I'll continue to draw attention to this issue because I receive emails daily, and I would imagine that you all do as well, and it's becoming a growing concern, but we have a group of homeowners, volunteers, just neighborhood organizers that consistently give of their time and energy on the weekend, and I want to just thank our Keep Cobb Beautiful Appointees in District Four, along with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition for their pickup this past Saturday. And we're always looking for homeowners, communities, or even individuals to Adopt a Mile, and you can contact dawn@keepcobbeautiful@cobbcounty.org, and she'll supply you with all of the information that you need to Adopt a Mile. This is really going to require a community effort to keep Cobb clean. Next slide. Also, In the Zone, Commissioner Cupid and Gault Porter, who is our Planning Commissioner for District Four, have monthly meetings to which I agreed that I would continue, but we're brand, rebranding it a little bit, so we're going to call it In the Zone. So if you want to have a voice of development in your- So, if you want to have a voice of development in your community, stay connected to the community by being in the zone. Zoning and land use decisions shape our communities for generations, and include matters from growing chickens on your personal property, or whether a park or green space would be the highest and best use for the community. So, I encourage you all to join me and Planning Commissioner Gault Porter on updates for zoning matters in District Four to make sure your voices are heard. District Four is experiencing a tremendous amount of growth right now, and there are a lot of zoning applications, there's a lot of development, and I really want the community to make sure that they are heard. Our meetings are on the fourth Wednesday at seven PM, and the meeting link will be included in my weekly newsletters, or you can contract, you can contact Deidra at deidra.watts@cobbcounty.org and request a link to the meeting. Thank you. That's all of my stuff.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to wait for my slides to come up. I'm grateful to see you're continuing that effort. I know the residents really appreciate it to have that opportunity to get your FaceTime before the actual zoning hearings. I need to confer with Commissioner Burl before I put my slides together. She puts my slide to shame here, but thank you, Commissioner Burl, for advertising our food drive with Cobb Senior Services. And again, no appointment is needed. You can feel free to just go ahead and show up at eleven-fifty Powder Springs Street in Marietta. For Cobb County residents, we have an excellent program with Construction Ready that has gotten people job-ready in just as little as twenty-one days. If you're interested in joining our next class, it is going to be held March eighth through April second. Please consider applying today by visiting wwwconstruptionready.org. All right. This next slide highlights a new program with Marietta High School, in which they will have evening school available for those who would like to get their high school diploma, but in a non-traditional setting or non-traditional times of the day. I'd encourage you to please check out their offerings by contacting Marietta City Schools. We have a couple of links below on our flyer. But just for practicality's sake, please sign up for our newsletter, or feel free to reach out to our office, or again, directly to Marietta City Schools for more information. And just to back up, that's of no cost. In celebration of Black History Month, or as Commissioner Sheffield said, American History, we have a bit of Cobb history that I wanted to share. On your screen is a picture of our first Black Commissioner here in Cobb County, Commissioner Annette Kesting. She served Cobb County's District Four between two thousand and four and two thousand and eight. And while we've certainly seen some changes, more recently, I did want to make sure that we did not forget her helping to pave the way for so many of us by her service. And again, as stated by Commissioner Burl, we have our Black History Month programming with the Cobb NAACP, and they will have an open house every weekend, starting this Saturday, to talk about various topics as they impact African-Americans. I don't like toting or touting things that conflict with our Board of Commissioners meetings, but they do have a very nice Black History program that is scheduled on the fourth Tuesdays in February every year, and this year, it will be Tuesday, February twenty-third, at The Strand. And you can reach out to the Cobb NAACP for more information. We are fortunate to have our Director of Public Health join us, in addition to Lisa Crossman, who's on her team, every Board of Commissioners meeting, to let us know about what's going on with COVID. And as they shared, we do have some great news in that our case rate is decreasing. It was about nine-eighty the last couple of Board of Commissioners meetings, or in the nine-hundreds and eight-hundreds, the last Board of Commissioner meetings that I've been addressing this matter, and now we're down to five-eighty-four, which means that we could be coming out the clear from the holidays. Nonetheless, there was a slide they shared with us this morning to show that our death toll has actually been increasing, and the unfortunate matter is that deaths do follow infection rates. So, while this graph may want to incentivize us to be a little bit less cautious than what we have been, please continue to wear your mask, to watch your distance, and to wash your hands. And she also had another one added, which was to limit your participation in small And I believe that concludes our slides. There's an announcement I'd like to make, to have Commissioner Gambrell join the Cobb Travel and Tourism as our representative from the Board of Commissioners meeting, and appreciate you taking that appointment. And finally, I guess since my last name is Cupid, I can't end the meeting without saying Happy Valentine's Day. So, hope that you enjoy your time with your loved ones, and this is just a great time just to enjoy the fact that we are still alive and breathing, which means there's hope for all of us. So, with that, enjoy the rest of your week, and thanks for joining our Board of Commissioners